Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Higher Education. If you would like to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Just a reminder, no one may approach the dais at any point during this hearing. Chair Dinowitz, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, Chair of the Committee on Higher Education. Welcome to our Oversight Hearing Addressing Obstacles Facing CUNY's Transfer Students. Let me start by reminding us all that April was National Community College Month. At our committee's April hearing, I expressed our appreciation for the hard work of CUNY's seven community colleges and that they do every day in serving more than 65,000 students. That's nearly one-third of CUNY's undergraduates. The community colleges' work will be highlighted in today's hearing as we look at what happens to CUNY's community college students who plan to and who do actually make the transition to CUNY's four-year or senior colleges. According to a new report by the Center for an Urban Future entitled "Boosting Transfer Student Success at CUNY," eight out of every nine community college students start out intending to transfer to a senior college to earn a bachelor's degree. Eight out of nine. But only roughly one in nine students actually transfers and earns that degree within six years. So I will say that again. Even though the vast majority of community college students start out saying they intend to transfer to senior colleges, eight out of nine, hardly any of them actually do. Furthermore, fewer than 50% of those students who do transfer to senior colleges go on to complete their bachelor's degrees within three years of enrolling there, and rates of completion are even lower for Black and Hispanic students. Those numbers should be concerning to all of us. The Center for Urban Future report makes it clear that transfer-related obstacles are pervasive in colleges across the country and are definitely not unique to CUNY. That has been true for many years. With that, we have an opportunity to address the transfer problem here. Center for Urban Future provides these seven recommendations to do just that: four recommendations for New York City and New York State leaders, followed by three for CUNY itself. You're there. One, launching a CUNY Transfer Accelerator initiative with an investment of up to $5 million to implement and scale up already proven effective tools and programs such as Transfer Explorer Tool. Two, creating a CUNY Flex program to provide wraparound support to many transfer students, part-time students, and adult learners who are unable to access existing support programs that require full-time enrollment. Three, scaling up CUNY programs such as Accelerate, Complete, Engage, or ACE, college transfer into senior colleges, and ensuring that such programs reach the same number of students in CUNY senior colleges as the Accelerated Study and Associate Programs, or ASAP, reaches in CUNY community colleges. Four, revising the CUNY funding formula to make a portion of the funds provided contingent on successful student transfers, thus creating an incentive for CUNY to strive for better transfer outcomes. Five, launching a transfer success team at each college, composed of researchers, faculty, administrators, and peer mentors from the campus in order to implement transfer policies and practices that have proven successful on a smaller scale on various CUNY campuses. Six, setting system-wide and individual campus transfer goals and publishing reports on their achievement based on more accurate and consistent data across the campuses that are now available, and establishing a way to track and analyze the data. Seven, creating a transfer academy to train faculty and administrators to become more knowledgeable about transfer policies and practices so that they can better serve CUNY students. We're pleased to have testimony today from the Center for an Urban Future, both to discuss the findings in their report and their recommendation. And of course, we are very interested in getting a fuller picture of CUNY's transfer process from CUNY administration. I want to acknowledge my colleagues who are here, Councilmembers Brewer, Marte, and Botcher. I'd also like to thank Adam Starapoli, my Legislative and Budget Director, Jenna Klaus, my Chief of Staff, Sahar Moazami, the Committee's Counsel, and Regina Paul, the Committee's Policy Analyst. I would like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person today that you must fill out an appearance card which is located on the desk of the Sergeant-at-Arms near the entrance of the room. Please fill it out even if you have already registered to testify in advance. To allow as many people as possible to testify, public testimony will be limited to three minutes per person. I am also going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. Please note that witnesses who are here will testify before those on Zoom. Now, in accordance with the rules of the Council, I will administer the affirmation to the witnesses from CUNY. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you. As a reminder to all witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record.
You ready? Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Dinowitz and other members-
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, I think it is. Yep, I can bring it closer. Good afternoon, Chair Dinowitz and other members of the New York City Council Committee on Higher Education, staff and guests. I'm Wendy Hensel, Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost of the City University of New York. I am joined this afternoon by CUNY's Vice Chancellor for Academic and Faculty Affairs, Dr. Alicia Alvaro; Dr. Sangita Bishop, current Faculty Transfer Fellow and former Department Chair of Borough of Manhattan Community College; and Dr. Colin Chellman, University Senior Dean of Applied Research Evaluation and Data Analytics. In academic year 2022-23, nearly 9,000 students transferred from a CUNY community college to a CUNY four-year college program. We are here today to share with you the transformational progress CUNY has made over the last several years towards seamless transfer of students between our community comprehensive and senior colleges. We will also outline for you the work that remains to be done and our full commitment to its successful completion. CUNY's founding legislation makes clear the university system was created in part to facilitate the seamless transition of our students between associate and bachelor degree programs. We are motivated not only by this understanding, but also by the moral imperative that the time, resources, and effort our students expend to achieve academic credit and complete their degrees anywhere at CUNY should be recognized fully everywhere across our system. I also note that two of us sitting here today have experienced these issues as parents, and we have watched our children struggle through a transfer process in which they have lost credits at CUNY and elsewhere. We understand firsthand the challenges and frustrations faced by transfer students, and we are dedicated to ensuring a seamless experience for all CUNY students. While my testimony today will focus on the strategic transfer initiative we began in 2022, that was by no means the beginning of our work in this space. For example, in 2013, CUNY's General Education Pathways Initiative was launched with support from a resolution by the CUNY Board of Trustees to facilitate the transferability of general education credits, coursework that every CUNY student is required to take for degree completion. This work was expanded with philanthropic support to identify more than 1,000 discipline-specific major gateway courses guaranteed to transfer seamlessly within CUNY for credit. At the same time, thanks to the support and collaboration with Ithaca S&amp;R, Lexa Logue, who previously held my position, the staff at Lehman College, and key philanthropic partners, we have developed a tool known as CUNY Transfer Explorer, which provides information on how any course at CUNY transfers to any other CUNY college. It also reflects useful trends and outcome data on transfer to bring transparency to the process. In addition to these central-led efforts, there have been several extremely effective collaborations at the campus level to affect the seamless transfer of students within specific majors and specific schools. For example, Bronx, Gutman, and Hostos Community Colleges each established blanket articulation agreements with Lehman College that guarantee a minimum of 60 credits would be applied to the bachelor degree in many common disciplines, resulting in admission with junior status. In addition, several multi-college academies were created, including the CUNY Justice Academy at John Jay, the Baruch Business Academy for Business Administration majors across four community colleges, the Online Psychology Academy at the School for Professional Studies, and the Urban Academy at the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies. These academies provide seamless transfer from community colleges and include many wraparound services that facilitate engagement between the community and senior colleges before students matriculate. These programs have been well-received and are extremely successful. It's also important to note that our Accelerate, Complete, and Engage, or ACE program, the baccalaureate version of ASAP, aims to double timely baccalaureate completion not only for first-time freshmen, but also for transfer students with an associate's degree. In FY '22, based on outstanding outcomes at John Jay and Lehman, ACE expanded to four additional senior colleges: York, City Tech, CSI, and Queens. The first transfer cohort at Lehman admitted in fall 2019 realized a two-year graduation rate of 61% versus 30% for a comparison group of students. We are extremely appreciative of the city's 8.2 million allocation for ACE and 2 million for Medgar Evers' CHAMP's program in FY '24, which allowed us to serve approximately 3,200 students. However, this funding has never been baseline, which significantly hampers our ability to implement these programs effectively. As of today, only $1 million has been allocated in FY '25 city budget for both programs. While these and other efforts have improved transferability, the first comprehensive initiative to address the universal transfer of credits within each major was launched in late 2022 and memorialized in CUNY's 2023 Strategic Plan. Entitled "One CUNY," this initiative comprehensively addresses transfer through curricular alignment within each major, the development of transparent policies and efficient technology, and the implementation of best practices for the retention, advisement, and advancement of transfer students. In January 2023, the CUNY Board of Trustees endorsed this approach by unanimously passing a resolution charging the university with making student transfer within the same major from a community to senior college seamless by December 2024. I am pleased to report that we are on track to accomplish this goal. A key challenge to the full transferability of credits within each major is the lack of coordination and alignment of academic programs across colleges and schools at CUNY. Recognizing the importance of faculty governance and the faculty's primary role in developing curriculum, in December 2022, CUNY's Office of Academic Affairs partnered with the University Faculty Senate to reimagine curricular alignment across the system. By identifying with disciplinary faculty the universal core competencies within each major that should be achieved within the first two years of the degree path, we will ensure that our community college students retain credits within the major and secure junior standing when transferring to the same major at a CUNY senior college. We began by tackling our largest transfer majors, which account for about 85% of all transfer students, and we will continue this process until all majors are addressed. In addition, all new programs developed in the future will be fully aligned across CUNY before receiving the approval to launch. Our approach is unique, has been embraced by the faculty, and already has been identified as a potential national model for other systems. Nevertheless, aligning core competencies and coursework alone will not solve the transfer problem. We must also tackle the numerous intentional and unintentional ways in which our policies and systems operate to impede transfer. For this purpose, last year, we established a new Transfer Committee on Academic Policy to review existing policies and identify new ones that will support transfer students throughout their academic journey. For example, we are working on a policy to ensure that the course equivalencies in place at the time a community college student first enrolls in CUNY remain valid until they transfer to a baccalaureate program, to avoid unnecessary credits or courses that do not contribute to degree progression. We likewise are thoroughly evaluating the transfer process from the student's perspective, beginning with the transfer application and continuing through admission and registration at a four-year college. We are identifying every obstacle and forming cross-functional teams that develop targeted solutions addressing issues ranging from technological enhancements to improvements in the advisement process. We know that to succeed, transfer students must also have wraparound support that they need when they first begin their journey at a four-year institution. This transition period is a critical juncture when students simultaneously begin to take more advanced courses and lose some of the extra support community college provides. CUNY is working on several measures in this space, including a pilot transfer-peer mentor program this fall that will embed transfer mentors at two community colleges and one senior college. Mentors will work closely with academic advisors across all three institutions to provide transfer students with the information, resources, and most importantly, support and belonging necessary to succeed during the transition. As I mentioned earlier, CUNY Transfer Explorer is a transformative tool that provides students information and transparency. The transferability of CUNY and non-CUNY courses, credits for prior learning, and advanced placement exams is now clear and accessible across the system. Students can identify how their credits will transfer to specific majors at specific colleges before transferring to help them make the best decisions. Notably, this is not just for students, but also serves as an important resource for academic advisors, faculty, and college administrators. Our goal is to have community college students indicate their plan when they enroll so that we can integrate this critical information into our advisement software and enable four-year colleges to provide proactive support from the moment of matriculation. Transfer Explorer also contains publicly available leaderboards indicating how long transfer admission actually takes, the percentage of graduates by transfer and non-transfer status, and much, much more. CUNY is committed to further enhancing Transfer Explorer's impact and will continue to add new features and tools to this important tool. One critical challenge we face is our students' limited access to academic and career advisors, which can acutely affect the success and ease of transfer. While our specialized programs like College Discovery, ASAP, ACE, and SEEK maintain low student-advisor ratios, the ratios at senior colleges are significantly higher. While we appreciate the one-time funding we have received from the Council to address this challenge, the necessity for additional baseline funding for academic and career advisors cannot be overstated. Advancement and advisement technology and analytics can alleviate some of the workload each advisor carries, but the ability to dedicate personalized time to each student remains essential, particularly for transfer students. Improved data means little if there is no advisor on the other end that can act on the information. I conclude by noting that our efforts to improve the transfer experience are yielding positive results already. Fall 2024 transfer student enrollment is currently up by 6.9% compared to the same period last year. By December 2024, we will have achieved the full transfer of credits within the same major for most of our community college students, a goal established by our board. And importantly, our work doesn't stop there. We will continue to have transfer at the forefront of every conversation and prospective curricular decision, as reflected by its prominence in our 2023-2030 Strategic Plan: CUNY Lifting New York. We know that addressing the transfer challenge requires a comprehensive and holistic approach, and we are confident that we now have the strategies in place across the system to finally reach this goal on behalf of our students. Thank you, and we look forward to your questions.
Thank you. I want to make sure our data is aligned. Does CUNY have numbers on how many community college students in each class year, in each college intend to transfer to senior colleges?
We don't have data on intention, but that is something CUNY Transfer Explorer, that's the newest feature, that was just launched this last spring, and so we are making a full-fledged effort this fall to have every community college at the point of matriculation to enter this information into this tool, and then that information will now be fed into the advisement tool at the four-year schools.
So the way that you have information about a student's intent is through this program?
Correct. The data that you cited is from a study that was done by an outside entity. In terms of our data collection, we have not, up until now, had a formal way of identifying which of our students intended to transfer. We have that as of spring, and we'll be collecting that going forward.
And the percent of transfer students that graduate within three years?
Within three years of matriculating in the bachelor's-
From, yes, from a community college to a four-year institution, percent of transfer students.
We know that 62% in 21-22 of our graduates in an associate's transferred to a baccalaureate program within two years, and 72% of our AAAS graduates transferred to a baccalaureate within two years in 2019. So 62% in 2021, 72% in 2019, went from the associate's into a bachelor's program.
And then how many of those transfer students graduated within three years?
So that is 52% of students who transferred from associate to baccalaureate programs got a degree within three years.
Is that on par with, I mean, is that about average? Do 50% of students who don't transfer graduate within three years?
50% who don't transfer. That is slightly higher for students who don't transfer.
It's higher for students who don't transfer? Okay. What data collection systems are currently in place to monitor the experience of students who intend to transfer to help ensure their success in obtaining a degree?
So you're asking about the data system that we have? So it's a compilation, I think, of tools. Transfer Explorer is the main tool that we have, but it doesn't capture the support. The advisement tool is the one that captures the support, and this summer, we are integrating the information across both. So the additional supports aren't something that we track outside of our advisement tool.
We've had hearings before, and it's, you know, we have these questions about students who come into college and then students who leave college. And it always seems like a really good idea to ask students a couple of questions, you know, where you come from, why are you here, where are you going? And then when they leave college, to do similar survey questions. And it, I don't know, feels like each time it is acknowledged as a good idea, but it seems that any time there is a survey question, it's through these various systems, and it doesn't apply to every student.
Well, part of what we're trying to do is get out of surveys, which have low response rates, and go into automatic data compilation so that we have that information whether or not a student steps forward to provide it or not. And one of the key challenges that we have up until now is often our systems don't talk to each other across institutions. And so we recently acquired EAB Navigate for every school within our system. EAB Navigate tracks student data about student success, how they're doing in their classes, and we're working to be able to share that information across. And we can easily add, and that's part of our conversation right now, that data that automatically gets identified so that it isn't the student that has to tell us, but the incoming and current colleges that are constantly in contact to facilitate that transfer from the moment that they enter. But up until now, what you're seeing is a system that did not do that prior to 2023 and going forward from 20, really 2024. We will have that ability. So that is a new thing that has come on board, but our goal is that it is not reliant on a survey, but instead on an advisor conversation where that information for every single student is inputted into our systems and can be shared across institutions.
So I love the automation systemic way that is being done, but how is it being done if, I think we all acknowledge, there aren't enough advisors, there isn't enough investment in ACE and AICs? How is it actually happening without the investment in advisors?
Well, it certainly isn't done as well as it could be. I mean, that is something that we are looking to develop, a holistic and comprehensive advisement plan, as we indicated. One of the challenges is we see the data and the success from a program like ACE, which goes from a 31% two-year transfer graduation rate to 60% with that additional support. That requires funding that we do not currently have. However, every student has access to advisor and will meet with an advisor as part of our programs. So the EAB Navigate covers every single student as well.
The what navigator?
EAB Navigate. It's our student success platform that now is universal across our system, and will be online, I think, as of this summer, ultimately.
How often do students who are not in the ACE program meet with an advisor?
I don't know. Do you all have that? We can get back to you on a specific answer to that, but it varies dramatically by school. My concern, which you can probably tell from what I said before, my concern, our concern, is to get the student who doesn't come forward for that advising session to ensure that we capture them in some type of a safety net as it relates both to their intentions and information, but also the advisement process. The analytics and data that we are creating through these integrated systems will significantly assist us in proactive outreach rather than reactive outreach when the student indicates they want to talk to us.
But can I just say fundamentally, it requires a human being to reach out to the student. That's the same whether or not there's an automated system, right?
Candidly, it does and it doesn't. With things like automated messaging and chatbots, we can identify who's at a particular point in the curriculum to know that it's time to think about transfer. That can all actually be done automatically directly to a student with a text. So it alleviates the burdens on the individual advisors to then move into the more highly personalized conversations, like about which school is in your best interest, or what is your future plan. So you actually can automate quite a bit of it, but certainly it is not sufficient at the highest and best levels.
And I just want to add, even within the ASAP and ACE program, ASAP developed ASAPi, which is parallel to something that's EAB Navigate. So it's a tool that helps the advisors identify who needs more advisement sessions, and so then the requirement to meet with the high-needs group might be three times in a semester versus the medium group versus the students that are doing just fine and only need that once. EAB Navigate does that much quicker and doesn't require the manual entry. But, to your point, then it categorizes the groups, and so now, as an advisor, I know who are the ones I need to proactively reach out to that need that additional support. So by decreasing that workload that's currently required to proactively reach out, the students that are not in these special programs currently have advisors with such huge caseloads that they don't have that information. But now with Navigate, every student, every advisor will have that information and enable us to proactively reach out to them through text messaging and to get them to come in.
We've been hearing, I think, at a hearing last year, we were hearing about some of this being used, student-peer navigators for things. So some of this stuff already exists, and we're still experiencing some of the problems. And again, it's, how are we doing this when there are still so few advisors? And just to be clear, the very people who aren't responding to an email may also not respond to a text message and need that phone call. So I'm still sort of, need a little clarity on how it's actually getting done with so few advisors.
Again, there is no substitute for the personal conversation with an advisor. And however great our data and information is, if there's no one to receive that information and act on it with the student, then it goes into a vacuum, and I think we've seen that. However, we have not fully, or even come close to fully implementing, the capacity and possibility of the new technology that we have now acquired system-wide. So there is a major push to implement across the system fully, and what it does is it allows the more routine questions to be answered automatically in the moment by chatbots and things. We know probably 80% of the questions that will be asked 100 times by a similar set of students. What we need is more manpower and female power, person power-
Human power, yeah.
Human power, thank you, to go in for the 20% that needs to have a human being sit down and really talk about goals, future, and strategies that can't be captured in an automatic type of exchange. We don't have enough people to be able to do that, and that is a priority for us in the future, but it is deeply constrained by the resources, and it's particularly constrained by one-time funding, because advisors are highly skilled, must be trained, and it's multi-year appointments. So we can't, it's a lovely thing and wonderful thing, and we greatly appreciate one-time funding, but it cannot replace the investment in human capital that requires multiple years of funding.
Yeah, I would just add that this council, in last year's fiscal budget, I think, for the first time named ACE and ASAP as critical components of your budget, this year we're fighting, during our budget negotiations, fighting cuts to those very programs. And so in our budget response, we've made very clear that those programs that help students graduate and graduate in a timely- that, that helps students graduate and graduate in a timely fashion and have shown to double graduation rates within, within a timely fashion are priorities of this council.
I also want to add that the manpower needed, we are working on the peer.
Human power.
Support and the human power.
There you go.
It was my fault.
The human power, yeah, you started it. The, the human power necessary embedding transfer mentors within academic advisement. And Queens College launched a pilot program, yielded very successful retention rates. And we can get you information on that. And so we are expanding a pilot now to, to community colleges and another senior college to help alleviate some of that burden of the academic advisors and work in coordination with them.
When did they launch that?
They did it this past academic year.
The, okay, so is there, there is or is not data available?
We do have some data, yeah, on retention, not graduation yet because they just started.
Can you share it?
I, I will. I didn't bring it with me, but I just thought about it now.
One of the most effective ways to add that person-to-person advisement is actually through peers, which our data tells us peer, that students actually respond to in some cases quite a bit better when they get advice from their peers. So we, it, it's cost-effective and it allows us to both provide work for our students and additional advising for the younger students.
So I know that this, this committee, and I think even the chairs before me have brought up particularly about transfer credits. I keep doing that. Particularly about transfer credits. I mean, this has been an issue for as far back as I can, I can remember. And councilmember after councilmember have testified at various hearings. They have constituents who go to a community college. And the, the credits, they may transfer as elective credits, and this is something you alluded to in your testimony, but it doesn't count towards their major. And that is, you know, one of the driving factors of students not staying in school. So I, I was, on average, eleven credits. It's a semester of credits that students worked hard for and are not transferring for anything besides elective credit. And so can you go over the steps being taken to address that?
Sure. First, let me say it's totally unacceptable to us that that could happen. And we know that it's happened quite a lot, in, in large part because of the lack of coordination across academic programs across the system. So you have consistent rules by individual colleges, but not with the intention of transfer, even though our AA and AS degrees exist to transfer. That is literally the function that they play. And Alicia has, Dr. Alvaro has headed up the, and also Dr. Bishop, so I'll let them tell you about the specific steps where we've coordinated between the faculty and the administration to hopefully solve this problem once and for all.
To EBC Hensel's point, as part of the transfer initiative, what we really uncovered is something that was alluded to by the Center for Urban Research. It's educating the faculty. So many of these decisions are unintentional. Faculty, and I was faculty for twenty years, you evaluate transfer credit, think, oh, I'll give them elective, it counts towards their one-twenty, so what's the difference? But there is a huge difference and not understanding that. And so I, I want to allow Dr. Bishop to talk a little bit about what that educational campaign, how have we been able to open up the conversation to, in order to, to help us in that? And then you're probably going to have follow-up questions.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure I'm hearing right because it's, it's, I want to make.
The ten-second version, which is probably helpful at the front end, is we put together any, the majors that crossed, right? If you have accounting, then the, all of the accounting schools that had the major got together and identified essentially the first half of the major. What are the core competencies that must be mastered by the student? They came to an agreement on that, then went back to their own community colleges and said, what courses do we have that count for those competencies? Once they've decided on that, and we will have done that by the end of twenty twenty-four, for eighty-five percent of the majors, they automatically transfer to wherever in the system you take that major, so.
Thank you. I think the main, main issue that, that both EBC Hensel and V.C. Alvaro are talking about is the curricular alignment piece. And that's the piece that probably has been missing to some extent in, in this whole transfer process. And that's what we are trying to address, make sure that the curriculum for the community colleges aligns with the curriculum for the senior colleges so that whatever courses students take in the major at a community college can seamlessly transfer to that major in the senior college. If there is a curricular alignment, you no longer have credit wastage. You no longer have courses just going as elective credits, but they're going now as credits in the major so that when the students transfer to the senior college, they transfer with junior status in the major. That's the whole idea behind it.
The key is that every one of those credits counts toward degree completion, right?
Right.
As opposed to sitting over here as it's nice that you took it and it's credit that doesn't really serve any purpose because you've already exhausted your electives, now you have twenty additional elective credits. That's unacceptable. And frankly, that is some of the disingenuous conversations that you hear when systems say, all of our credits transfer. Oh, they, they transfer, but they don't progress you toward completion of your degree. The program that we've now implemented with the faculty, because the faculty must agree to this.
So this, this is what I, I, I need to ask about because it sounded, by what you testified before, that the faculty seem unaware of the graduation requirements or the requirements for the major? And I want to clarify what you said, please.
So I'll give one example to, to first illustrate. If I am at a community college and I'm a department and the faculty create a major in accounting with a specialization, but the conversation is not, well, if the purpose of this degree is to prepare students to transfer and the students then transfer to a school that doesn't offer accounting in that concentration, but it's the major feeder, that, that's fundamentally the problem. I've created a degree with a specialization, which might be fantastic, but if it is not aligned to that same major at a senior college. So the curriculum is developed in isolation. Each school creates their own curriculum and they're not having the conversation about, well, if we are preparing a student to transfer, where are we preparing a transfer student to go in the development of the curriculum? So they create these specialized courses that might not have an equivalency at that senior college. So then the faculty at the senior college say, well, that's a great course, we, we don't offer that course, so therefore it must transfer as elective because we just don't offer that course. And so with the competency approach, what we did is what must a student learn? I might package it this way and I might package it this way, but can we agree that combining our first two years of credits and your first two years of credits, the students have the fundamental information that they need? Forget about all the, this chapter's, you know, covered in chapter, this chapter's covered in week fourteen and I cover something else. Doesn't matter. I might cover it in a different course. So it's about the information and providing students and ensuring that they've learned the same information regardless of how it's packaged at a community college versus a senior college. So that's what's created that fundamental. And that was not something that we really even realized until we started really looking at why is there, why aren't these credits transferring? Why are these things happening? And discovering that it's because this curriculum alignment conversation is not being had. And that's our role at Central, is how are we ensuring that we are really functioning as one system versus curriculum being developed in isolation of transfer?
Thank you. I want to turn it over to Councilmember Brewer for some questions.
Thank you for all your great work. Maybe you sort of answered this, but we all love ASAP and we love ACE. So can one go, I noticed there were fewer ACE slots than ASAP slots. So how does that work if you are trying to transfer with that support mechanism?
So, great question, but because the funding levels are so different between the two, the, the numbers are, are less. So some of the schools with ACE funding are strictly transfer. And so the students, they, as they transfer, so it's a two-year ACE program, and then some schools, there's two schools that are four-year programs, so from freshman all the way through four years. But that transfer piece, we are currently working and having conversations and hopefully I'll be testifying at some point soon about the exciting work that we're doing to strengthen that alignment and that transfer support so that students don't go from ASAP to nothing and having that transfer support. But more broadly, we are wanting to replicate that transfer support that currently exists within ACE to the broader student.
Because it would seem to me, I don't know this for a fact, that if you had ASAP and you don't have anything, well, you might not get through in a couple of years.
Correct.
Is that, are you tracking that also or hasn't been long enough to track?
Yes, we are looking, we have the differences between the schools that have ACE and then those that, that do not and that are transfer-focused.
It's just a funding issue, is that what it is?
Absolutely.
To try to address that concern?
Absolutely.
Okay. The other question I have is, and this is just because I love the Center for Urban Future. So I know Jonathan Bowles is very focused, as he should be, on workforce development. In other words, that's also part of, so is, how does that, if at all, play a role in the transfer student? You can do whatever you want, but is there some, is there more effort perhaps for that topic to come up in the discussion? Because I think he's right, CUNY could help more in this area. So how, how is workforce development, which is his big thing, part of your transfer program?
And part of it comes into play by understanding what the students' goals are. If the student, you know, one thing we haven't talked about, a place where students lose credits on a fairly routine basis, is they change their major. And so some of the classes that you take don't transfer. And so part of what we've been talking about is actually aligning very closely career and academic advisors to be, you know, either the same person or the addition in multiple places. We know that our retention numbers go up significantly when there is discussion from the first day of matriculation as to what the career outcome is. And then career milestones are linked to the academic career and degree path. So that's true for transfer students, that's true for every student. And we are having those conversations both separately and in tandem with the conversations about transfer.
And is that also an issue, again, back to the advisors, of having enough advisors who are up on that topic?
Absolutely.
Because that's also his big thing. I'm a big Jonathan Bowles, well, fan club.
It's a particularly acute issue because often it, we really need outside industry experts to come in and assist with that process.
Two more things related to, to the workforce development. We have traditional degree maps that tell a student which courses to take. We have been talking about having transfer maps so that how to, what courses to take at the community college, but the more important thing is we're embedding career milestones into degree maps. So it's not just about which courses to take, but what activities do I need to be doing in order to ensure success in getting a job? And then the second piece that we've worked on, and the Office of Transformation has worked on this, there is a distinction between an AA, an AS, and an AAS. An AAS is essentially a tech degree. And that is a terminal degree designed to get you a job. But what has happened over the years in development and curriculum development without coordination, many students take an AAS degree either because they, and there's a few that take it thinking they want a job and then transfer. But we have found very large numbers of students getting an AAS and transferring. An AAS has very applied courses, very few gen ed courses, so they by definition will lose transfer credit. And so in these conversations, the schools within AAS have been redesigning the AS to guarantee career outcomes and career success, but also ensure the students are advised correctly from the beginning so they don't mistakenly enroll in a program that is not designed to transfer where they would lose transfer credit.
They're also embedding apprenticeships with New York CEO Jobs Councils and different industries. So it's a, it's a very comprehensive reimagining of the AAS degree, but distinguishing it very clearly from the transferable degrees.
Okay. And then just, I guess my other question is, are there enough, sometimes you get the complaint that there, that course, in order to transfer from the community college to the four-year, isn't available because of whatever, budget cuts, et cetera, et cetera. Is that something that is still an issue or are you able to address that? In other words, I need to get out of my community college, I am going to transfer, but the course that I need to do that is not available because of budget cuts or whatever, and that's a concern. Is that still, I, happening? And I, I don't understand the business community in New York City not saying, CUNY needs help. Go ahead.
We, we will say, we always need additional help and resources.
I know, but they should be doing more. Go ahead.
And we are trying to address that issue in every way possible, including through what we call ePermit, which allows a student to take at any of the other campuses the course that they need at their home campus. So we are actually, at the same time that we're working on transfer, reimagining what ePermit, how and when the rules are over that. So that literally the student once again can leverage the system as opposed to just the individual resources of the individual college or school.
And it's the same issue with more professional staff to teach the courses. I assume that's in the same bailiwick as a challenge.
Well, I, one of the things I've said at a prior hearing, and I'll say here again, we actually have better student-faculty ratios now than we did in twenty nineteen, in part because of the six hundred faculty members that were hired and the significant decline in enrollment that we simultaneously experienced. So I would say those issues are more of a mismatch of scheduling and demand, and we are working through those challenges with new technology that should significantly improve our scheduling for the benefit of students.
I know this is a crazy question, but is there anything AI and that world can do to help in this?
That is what I'm talking about, absolutely. Where instead of identifying what you did last semester and basically starting with that as your model, you look at students already in your system, where the demand is, where they are in their degree path, and create the schedule based on student need and demand as opposed to a historical model of, of scheduling. So yes, there are, I mean, candidly, we're behind in this space. It's something that we're pushing hard on, and I think within, you will see a, a significant difference within the next six months to a year.
Okay. I may just conclude with thanking the chair, but I really do think that the city of New York owes CUNY a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed. I, I want to go back to my first question about data. Because I'm reading the CUNY website, I, I want to make sure I heard you that you don't have the data on what students intend to do. But on the CUNY website, it, I'm just going to read you a paragraph. It says, this is from cuny.edu, and it's about associates to bachelor degree transfer. And it says, "The leaks in the transfer pipeline between associate's degree and bachelor's degrees are a critical problem nationally as well as in the CUNY system." About thirty percent of college students in the U.S. are enrolled in community colleges, but eighty-seven percent at CUNY say that their ultimate goal is to earn a bachelor's degree, which by definition necessitates transfer between colleges. However, six years later, only eleven percent at CUNY have done so. And so is, I don't know if I asked the question wrong or if they, you're using data that you don't have, but if you could talk about that for a sec, please.
All of the above. We received a one-time federal grant to do a study of transfer students. So that was a, a large scale, it funded a large-scale survey of incoming students, and those are the results you saw. Unfortunately, it was one-time funding.
So you do have data.
Well, one year.
I mean, but the.
But we don't track.
So it was a snapshot as opposed to, and we, we don't do it on a regular basis. We didn't, we had special funding to do a one-year survey, which I actually wasn't aware of, so I'm glad, I appreciate you pointing that out. But we do not have a practice of tracking where we could go in and give you hard data on this question.
Okay. I, I would hope that in the future, if I ask a question about data, you can put all the caveats you want on it, that we have a one-time survey, but it would very much be appreciated if that, if that data were shared because it felt, feels hidden, right? When I'm like looking, trying to look up data here and reading from the website. So, so there is data that exists, and certainly things have changed in those few years, but I think fundamentally, it highlights the, the problem. And I just really need to articulate that before moving on to the question. Centrally, now, now it's acknowledged, the problem, let's say for transfer credits, exists with schools, I guess, aligning curricula or finding things, elements in a course that can align with one of their courses. And I'm interested to know how much of that is pressure from Central to ensure that that happens? And how much is left up to each senior college to determine on their own?
Yeah. Well, up till now, most of it's been left up to the senior college on their own. And that, and that's why you see a patchwork of results, right? And, and frankly, too many people making decisions individually. And so that's why we determine, not just that we need to have more central control, but we need to do that in partnership with the faculty because they are the experts in the curriculum. And, and that's why we think that this, this approach. And that's why we think that this, this approach is unique and will work, as opposed to being lip service to fixing the transfer problem. Because ideally, I mean, the way that we will set this up, and then we will code it on the backend to ensure that this happens, once that agreement is in place, it is in place. There is no more discretion that comes in at the senior colleges, saying, "We are not going to accept those credits" because the faculty agreed as a group that they would. The other additional piece, of course, is that that does have to evolve over time, and so, that will change. But, it will be a controlled change, so that whatever rules were in place at the moment that the person transferred are still operative by the time the person graduates. So, they're not subject to going back and forth as the faculty meets and may make new decisions on that major.
And just what does, what does that pressure or incentive look like? You know, for a senior college to really dig in and find those, those transfer courses to apply to the major?
The incentives to-
To the senior colleges, to the professors, to the schools themselves?
I think these are, in the vast majority of cases, these are good-faith determinations by faculty that, in their opinion, it is not an equivalent. Now, whether that is a fully informed decision or not, we question from time to time. For example, we often have arguments now over whether the same class isn't transferable because it was taken in a remote setting versus an in-class setting. Those are things that we should need, we should decide together administratively, and then have consistency. Because students shouldn't be in the position of having to advocate for each of these courses when they make these transfers. We will create the system of rules with the cooperation of the faculty and agreement of the faculty, and then, we will administer it to ensure consistency.
I want to add, I don't want to say pressure, but what has definitely-
You can say pressure.
Helped open up the door of conversation is the student success metrics. Sharing the data of what is happening to the students as a result of these decisions has been extremely eye-opening for faculty, seeing what percentage of the students, and this is one of the features of Transfer Explorer, it's been fantastic, that shows, how do our students fare once they transfer? What percentage of the students in my department are transfer students? That information has not been as transparent as it needs to be in order to enable these conversations. And one, by and large, as faculty see what is happening and the challenges student, transfer students are facing, it's gained buy-in from the faculty.
And was this, did you say the timeline for this is 2020, this year, 24?
The end of this calendar year, yes.
So, by December, there will be, I guess, a map of all courses at CUNY that, that can or do transfer for credit from, from associates to bachelors?
Well, that's already in Transfer Explorer. But, the automatic transferability of course-aligned credits will be in place by the end of December for 85% of our community college students. Once we hit, go past the 85%, we're talking about small majors with small numbers of students. So, it will take us a little bit longer to complete that last piece. But, even those students will benefit tremendously from the additional work and transparency through the technology.
Is there a timeline for that other 15%?
They're happening as we go. We're doing it along with the 85%, which are the six big majors. So, your work is continuing on that. At the same time, we also have work continuing on some of the other majors. So, I have somebody who's working on math. I have another person who's working on biology. So, they are being tackled, and the hope is that some of these other majors will, it won't just not stop at 85, but maybe we might have 90 by the time it's the end of December.
So, they're underway. It's not that they're not all underway, it's that we prioritize the largest with our resources.
And as new majors are created, I think this has to be continuous.
Well, so that was my next question. Even within a major, there are new courses that pop up all the time, or even a curriculum changes slightly. And so, what is the process for adapting to either new courses or courses that change their syllabus even a little bit?
That's a great question, and that's, that's exactly what we're doing. We're creating faculty groups that will be looking at requests to make changes. Because curriculum has to evolve and it has to change. But, what we don't want is it changes at a senior college and doesn't then change when it needs to change at the community college. So, if changes are being recommended at a community college, senior college, there will be a faculty committee that reviews that to identify, well, if this change happens here, then it needs to happen at a community college to see where is, so to continue that curriculum alignment. And so, that will be a process. We have that with general education. We have a committee that anytime there's a proposal for a new gen ed course, that reviews these things to ensure that we have that transfer guarantee, and we'll be creating it for every discipline.
I remember you testified at our CEELO by literacy here, and I was actually shocked that this faculty has to meet for nationally-recognized exams, like AP courses, that they still have to meet. And so, there's no automation there for even nationally-recognized. And there's no automation currently within your own system that if a syllabus exists. So, they have to review every single one manually?
Yes, but we are going to be, we've been talking about using artificial intelligence to help scan. So, if there's a brand-new course, let's say, and I want to know which course equivalencies already exist across the system, artificial intelligence can review that syllabus and populate all of that. So, it decreases a manual effort, but there's no replacement for faculty and faculty governance in having to review.
I agree. No replacement for people or human power. Have you, do you have a contract with an AI company or an organization to actually do that work?
We have a number. We have a number of them in different spaces. EAB Navigate is the AI tech issue in student success. We are using CoreStog as it relates to scheduling and the issues that Councilperson Brewer brought up.
I meant for transferring credits, for doing exactly what you said, is there a contract?
We actually have a faculty member who has developed something on their own, and it's pretty good. So, I think we might want to, it's a CUNY faculty member, and I'll leave it at that.
You must be very proud.
Very.
Does it have a clever name like all these other contracts you have?
No.
No.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Got to, got to, you know, get a patent or whatever you do for that. So, the goal is to use that CUNY faculty member's-
Algorithm.
Algorithm, AI program?
Embed it within Transfer Explorer to allow for that automated course equivalency.
And it's been tested, evaluated?
Being tested and evaluated, correct.
By, evaluated by who?
By a group of developers from Transfer Explorer who have expertise in this area.
And professors?
Yes.
Okay. I'm interested to know how often you were talking to students and the student experience? Because we do have a snapshot survey that was one-time federal funding. And we also don't have anything systemic taking in student experience. But, what is in place beyond the automated, you know, looking at data to understand where a student is academically? What is in place now to understand a student's experience?
Conversations, very close conversations with the Student Senate. They are integral members of this conversation and have been involved from the very beginning.
And is there any, are there any metrics that you measure to, to reach conclusions about the needs of students?
We have a biannual student experience survey. It gives us broadly a sense of how satisfied students are with particular services across CUNY. We don't get into a ton of detail, but yes, we do have a biannual student experience survey.
Biannual, twice a year?
Oh, sorry, every two years.
Okay. I was going to say semi-annual, biannual, always. Nobody knows what those words mean. And, and so, you're collecting data, and I think you said before, it is, I guess, voluntary whether the students complete the survey. But, when you face challenges, you are developing all of these systems for transfer, recognizing that transfer credits and transferring from associates to four-year is a challenge. Are you updating your survey to reflect what you know to be a challenge? To have student-focused data to reflect the needs of the student body and inform your decisions?
Absolutely. Every two years, we, we send the draft survey to our campus representatives and to Wendy's, excuse me, EVC Hensel's cabinet in order to update, to make sure we're covering the issues that are on everyone's plate, top of mind.
And that includes the Student Senate?
Student Senate, we do not include Student Senate specifically, no.
But, we use data from previous years.
I'm, I'm interested to know more about that decision, why not to include the Student Senate?
Well, so, the Student Senate, we tap in particular, so look, excuse me.
Alicia.
Alicia, oh my heavens.
I won't take offense.
Speaks to representatives of the Student Senate. We work most efficiently through Alicia to update the survey.
I wonder how your survey questions would be different if they included direct? I believe that you relay the messages very well. But, I wonder how your questions would be different if they included direct communication with students? And to just hearken back to something I said just, you know, a little while ago, we've heard from numerous hearings here, and since before I was chair, other council members talk about the problems with transferring credits from their students. They heard directly from their students.
Yeah. Both of us have experienced it as parents, and that experience is different, right? Than as an administrator, and it gives you a different understanding and frankly, an emotion level as it relates to lost, lost credits.
Not to mention the impact on your wallet.
Believe me, I noticed that, yes.
And the students, by the way, yes.
We coordinate with USS all of the time. I think your points are well-taken, and it's certainly something that we could add them to this conversation. I'm learning things about process, sitting here, as are you. And we are continually identifying new ways to engage students at a more meaningful level in the changes that we're making. So, I think that's a good suggestion and one that we can look at.
I just want to, can, may I add one thing to that?
Of course.
Definitely, a student voice is very important. But, I think the people who know most about loss of credit, about difficulties that students face, are the department chairs. Because this is what we, I've been department chair for nine years. I've been doing this on a daily basis with my students. Sending, contacting senior colleges on their behalf, finding out why their credit didn't transfer. Speaking with the students one-on-one and finding out, well, I wanted to do this major, but I heard my friends say that maybe that major is better, and that's what they are doing. And so, you know, maybe that's what I want to do. My daughter's boyfriend changed his major from music to psychology because he spoke to her. So, does this happen all the time? It happens all the time.
You know, there are some people in this room who've done pretty well for themselves with a music degree.
I know, and I think he would have done pretty well, and I think he thinks that too, because now he's not interested in psychology anymore. So, okay, so, yeah. But, students do this. So, yes, student voice is very important, but at the same time, I think that chair voice is really important, just like parent voice is important. You know, they're, as they're saying, they've dealt with this as parents. I've dealt with it as a parent as well. But, I think that it's important to involve all these different voices in trying to get data. And I'm pretty sure that Alicia, and the contribution that she makes when she talks from students, is also coming from the chair's point of view. Because I know that I've been talking to Alicia for years on this topic, and on several other topics that pertain to this. So, we do take it into account. Maybe we don't have a student sitting there saying, you know, oh, can you add question X and can you add question Y? Can students really do that? I don't know. I have, you know, yes, student voice is very, very important. But, a lot of times, students don't know what they are looking for, and they need guidance. And that guidance comes from faculty, from department chairs, from administration, from advisors. And I think that's where CUNY needs most assistance, is getting the students the support that they need. So, they don't go and take, you know, change their major to psychology just because their girlfriend told them that that's what she's doing.
They should just double major.
Oh, well, you know what? If he had talked to me about it, that's what I would have told him to do. But, he didn't come to me, he changed his major.
A lot of people have done very well double majoring-
Exactly.
-in music and something else.
Exactly. That's my point.
I would just, I would just share that I often find a disconnect between the student experience and the levels of bureaucracy that it takes to get up to things like a survey. And I, I value that you're recognizing the need for, to address transfer credits. But, again, it is something that has been here for, for years, a problem for years. And so, to not recognize the voice of the students doesn't discount the voices of the advisors, which we recognize, don't always talk to the students who have the most need, right? That's what-
And we have spoken extensively, and will continue to do so because of the value of the student voice. So, yeah, please know that that is a priority of the Office of Academic Affairs, and we work very closely with the Student Senate with these issues.
I'll never forget, a couple of years ago, when we were talking about students with disabilities on CUNY campuses. And there was, there's a lot that CUNY does for students with disabilities. They testified, if they was great. And then afterwards, we had a student testify, they didn't even know, they couldn't even find the office for students with disabilities. Right? And this was, they were able to figure out how to come to a hearing and testify to a New York City council hearing, but couldn't navigate the system at CUNY. Which is always a reminder to me that the things that we see as people who look at data and are consolidating information from various places are not always the experiences we directly hear from the students. That was a long way of saying, "Talk to more students." And so, once that student transfers from a community college to a four-year institution, are they targeted with any specific or special support that is perhaps different than someone entering the four-year institution as a freshman with no credits?
It varies fairly dramatically by institution, which is part of the, the challenge that we are now addressing is identifying some things that should be in place at every institution. If you want to talk about some of those supports.
So, yes, the supports vary substantially, and EVC Hensel alluded to, for example, the academies that are, that exist at some of the senior colleges. So, some of them have the wraparound services that begin when the students are at the community college. So, even before that transition support. Queens College launched a peer-mentor transfer support for that transitional period. So, what we are doing is taking a look at all the different things that are being done across the colleges that already have those support services, and developing a model that should be the standard level of care across all of the schools that include that first, before they even enroll. Because sometimes what we're finding is something termed "transfer melt." They apply, they get admitted, and then they never show up. And one thing that's reported by students is they're bombarded with information. They get so many emails, they get overwhelmed, they don't even know what to do next.
If only they had a chatbot talking to them, they'd be-
That actually is the solution.
That is one of the solutions.
It is.
We can tell who has submitted what forms, and so, you begin to target communication only to the person who needs to receive the communication. So, it actually significantly reduces that external noise. You sound skeptical, but I assure you, there's actually data that shows this is a quite effective technique to actually direct-target the right person at the right time in order to convey the information that's needed.
And if they need help that can't be answered, they're immediately connected with the person to be able to help them. Because some of the questions they have, they're very embarrassed to ask a person, and they feel most confident asking the questions to a chatbot or at 2:00 in the morning. And so, finding that balance between when is it they need to be connected to a person and giving them the opportunity to chat in a way in which they feel comfortable asking those questions that they wouldn't want to ask a human is something that we are working on.
So, the Center for an Urban Future report notes that many students continue to struggle when it comes to ensuring that the credits transfer along with them, especially as applied towards a degree, as we've been discussing. How is CUNY ensuring this is made more transparent? How is CUNY ensuring this is made more transparent and more efficient so students don't waste additional time and resources?
It will be, it's a multi-prong approach. First, the transfer plan, knowing when and what, where a student wants to transfer from day one is critical, because from day one, they need to know which courses to be taking. The moment that we have a delay in knowing when they want to transfer, the courses they take.
But let me, that requires knowing that they want to transfer.
Correct.
To a four-year institution.
Which we're capturing now in Transfer Explorer.
Okay.
We are now officially.
Please continue.
Yeah, and that's exactly why we need the tracking of that information. And so providing that information, what, one of the one things from this transfer initiative I'm most excited about is then we will have these transfer maps. So a student doesn't have to know from day one, I want to go to Queens College, I want to go to John Jay. Right now, there's so much chance, right? If I have to take these courses if I want to go to John Jay, if I want to major in psychology at Queens College, I have to take these with this transfer initiative, doesn't matter, they don't need to know at the very beginning. And if they major in psychology and know they want to transfer, they can go to any four-year CUNY school with that guarantee that all of their credits are going to transfer within the major. So essentially, we'll have like a blanket articulation, a map, take these courses at community college, and then we're also working at the senior college, what are the remaining courses? We want those transfer maps so it's transparent to all academic advisors, faculty, as well as students. So we'll, we'll have all that information come December 2024.
You'll have the information.
The students will.
The students will.
Will the public have the information? I think we've been talking about, you know, what are the success rates of the program? Are those all going to be public information?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Looking at the data guide to make sure.
If they say yes, I say yes.
The key to this success is transparency. And with the launch of our 2023 strategic plan, all of our major data points have become public and we vow to continue to track them publicly, and these are among those data points.
I just broke my pen. Are you modeling or have you looked at either externally other higher, higher education institutions to model after, or are you looking internally at schools like Baruch, which according to the report, has a 67% three-year graduation rate for transfer students?
Both. I met with Minnesota State System, Cal State, Maryland, you name it, I met with all of them and discovered that they all have a transfer problem and have all said, if you solve it, come to us. And other institutions are knocking on our door, asking how we've been able to make some success already. So yes, and looking at what's worked within the system as well, so all of the above.
I have two more questions, one is a Gail Brewer question. You ready? All right. You have a guy making a thing, a chatbot, was he making, an AI?
The faculty member, it was for course equivalencies.
Course equivalency. Is he licensing that and is CUNY getting any credit or residuals for licensing it?
As you were speaking, I thought, huh, we should do that.
Intellectual property.
Intellectual, every time someone clicks it, he gets a nickel. It's a lot of clicks though. But that's a real question, I mean, we have actually discussed at this hearing before, whether it's CUNY or other agencies, spending the money to develop something and then some other private entity benefiting from it. At the very least, this faculty member could probably license it and get some money. And then, lastly, you're, you are familiar with the Center for an Urban Future report. Just of these seven recommendations, or any of the recommendations, just other general thoughts about them, or the effectiveness or ineffectiveness of some of these, where you've read them and you may have said, that's a really good one, we're going to lean into that, or that doesn't make sense logistically and thank you, but no thank you.
There are elements of all of the things that we are doing in some of those recommendations. And so first, let me, let me thank the Center for Urban Futures for looking at an issue that we think everybody should be looking at. So we, we're in complete agreement about that. We, in terms of faculty academies, for example, you heard us say, there are misunderstandings with faculty and we've created, like the faculty fellow position, and educational opportunities. We don't have a full academy, if there are more resources, more people learn and we can implement it more quickly, so I think that that makes sense. In terms of setting funding to actual results, in terms of the time to graduation, it doesn't take into account how many part-time students that we have, how many are working full-time. And so we think the, the correct statistics are how many of our students are completing that transfer within a reasonable period of time. So I know you have more thoughts.
Yeah, I, I think, and I too am extremely grateful for the Center for Urban Research, and most of what they mentioned, the additional funding for technology like Transfer Explorer, absolutely, for more advisors, absolutely. The elements described in each of the, the different programs that are suggested would be wonderful and welcome because they would enhance our ability to make progress on these things and continue them. Because the one thing that I want to really stress is that doing this, this is fantastic, we have a great initiative ahead of us, but this has to be forever. We have to change the way in which we approve curriculum, the way, this needs to be, transfer needs to be at the forefront of every curricular decision. So that, that piece, I think, was probably not highlighted enough in that, but obviously you have to be in the weeds to kind of understand that. So building that infrastructure is something that I think is critical, and that is CUNY Central's role. How do we ensure that we're not in this mess? I always tell everyone, I approach a problem in two ways, how do I retroactively clean it up and proactively prevent it from continuing? And that prevention of continuing is something that we are embedding within this process to ensure that five years from now, somebody is not sitting here in the same chair saying, whoops, now we have all these new majors and they don't align, right? So how do we prevent that from happening? And so I, I don't have any issues with, with the things that were stated, other than, than the one piece about tying the budget to, that has to be very tricky because it has to be the right metrics. It's very difficult. Transfer and loss of transfer credits is such a complicated issue. We are solving a lot of it, but there will always be times when a student changes their major too many times and then they take too many credits, that then upon transfer end up not aligning with, with their major. But the advisement piece and making sure they're on the right track from the beginning, I think is critical to address that.
Yeah, at a basic level, if a student does work, they should get the credit for that work.
Absolutely.
And I'm glad to hear you agree with that and pleased to hear there are steps being taken, but it's very clear that there are a lot more steps that need to be taken, a lot more work to do. And so I look forward to checking with you next year to see the impact and effectiveness of all these initiatives you're pushing forward. So I want to thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Today, thank you. I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times, as such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing, hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have three minutes to speak on today's topic, addressing obstacles facing CUNY's transfer students. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. I will now call the first panel, Eli Dvorkin from Center for an Urban Future.
I'm Eli Dvorkin, editorial and policy director at the Center for an Urban Future. We're an independent think tank focused on creating a stronger and more inclusive economy in New York. Thank you so much, Chair Dinowitz and members of the committee, for the opportunity. For thousands of New York City public high school graduates each year, the most accessible path to a bachelor's degree and with it, a major boost economic mobility, is to enter CUNY as a community college student and then transfer to a four-year institution. However, most CUNY students who intend to transfer and complete a bachelor's simply won't reach the finish line. There are challenges at every point in the transfer process. Many who intend to transfer to springboard from a community college to a four-year institution never transfer at all, a smaller number are accepted but do not enroll. Others do transfer but are unable to complete. And there are issues with credits toward a major being lost, as we heard earlier, not baked into curriculum design, the transfer application process itself is hugely cumbersome, and too few faculty and administrative staff have the knowledge and the tools needed to help. Fortunately, CUNY is already doing a lot to address these challenges, as you've just heard from our university colleagues. Our research suggests that CUNY's interventions are working. For instance, the rate of transfer students graduating within three years of transfer increased from 38.7% in 2012 to almost 50% in 2019. But CUNY will struggle to achieve the progress needed without a new level of support from the city of New York. That starts with fully funding CUNY in the 2025 budget. The mayor's executive budget cuts nearly $84.9 million in city funds for CUNY compared to last year's adopted budget. The council should do everything possible to reverse these cuts. Arguably, the most effective option to help boost transfer student success is a simple one, baseline funding for additional academic and peer advisors at CUNY. Current ratios of students to advisors are unacceptably high and limit the effectiveness of other city and state investments in college access and success. We recommend that the city consolidate smart investments in what's already working by launching a new CUNY Transfer Accelerator initiative, which would invest up to $5 million annually in operationalizing and scaling up to all 25 colleges, the effective tool supports and practices that are delivering results. Given how many transfer students struggle when they enter a senior college setting, the city should commit to growing the small-scale but highly effective CUNY ACE Senior College Success Program, which is boosting graduation rates by upward of 27%, but reaches just 3% of eligible students today. The city should also consider piloting a new program, call it CUNY Flex, to provide wraparound supports to non-traditional students, including transfer students, older students, and part-time students who may otherwise be ineligible for ASAP or ACE. Helping far more of CUNY's aspiring transfer students to beat the odds and complete a bachelor's degree is among the most effective steps that policymakers can take to boost economic mobility. With this council's support, CUNY can accelerate and embed what's working system-wide and deliver better results for students at scale. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I think it was right on the dot, huh? Not bad. Could strike the final two, two words.
Thank you so much, and thank you, of course, for the report. I mean, a number of your reports are really critical to our understanding of the successes that CUNY has achieved and of course, the, the challenges and the hurdles faced by CUNY as a system and so many of our students. If you had to pick one single biggest factor or obstacle facing transfer students, what would you identify that obstacle to be?
Yeah, I think it's really the lack of knowledge of how this whole thing works, you know? I mean, only about 5% of faculty, when they were tested on this, and administrators, got transfer questions right, meaning 95% either didn't know or got it wrong, you know? So the level of knowledge within the faculty and, and administrative staff is really lacking today. But as a result, students just don't know what they don't know. I mean, about a quarter of all CUNY students, when they are surveyed, and it only happens once every two years, but they, they describe advising as really lacking, you know? Now, for many students, it's working, but for that, you've kind of heard in, in the previous testimony, that kind of 20 or 25% figure, the students who need more, you know, that is reflected in those survey, in that survey data, but the reality is those students are, you know, overrepresented among those students that don't make that transition. And a quarter of all students is a lot. So I think the number one issue is that knowledge gap, and we have a few recommendations aligned with that particular challenge.
And it was knowledge gap with the faculty, you said.
Right, which is where kind of students are getting their knowledge from.
Yeah.
Nobody enrolls at CUNY understanding how transfer is supposed to work, but they need to get that information from advisors, peer advisors, from faculty and from administrators. And right now, there's a big challenge there.
Yeah, it was, it was actually shocking to me when CUNY testified that and you're, I mean, you heard them testify that educating faculty on sort of the requirements and transfer, that was, I guess, coming from the K-12 world, as a teacher there, where it was very clear you need this many credits in each of these subjects to graduate. I think things were a lot more aligned in the DOE than they are with CUNY, obviously, but that was one of the reasons it was so shocking to me. And so when CUNY testified that part of their work is faculty education, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, I mean, first of all, I give CUNY a lot of credit for recognizing the problem, you know? And that survey that was conducted by CUNY faculty themselves revealed just how little faculty really know about transfer at CUNY. You know, what I would say there is, I think it's, it's really important to note that CUNY is taking some steps right now to start to address this, you know, developing a fellowship program for faculty to become more expert in transfer. That's absolutely the right idea, but right now, we're talking about a handful of those fellows across 25 colleges and, you know, nearly 200,000 students. So what I would say is that the approach is, first of all, acknowledging the problem, the approach is, I think, the right one. We recommend creating a transfer academy, I think you did here in that previous panel, support for the idea, I think what was going unsaid there is, there just aren't sufficient resources right now to be able to do what I think is needed at scale, to go from, what's the right idea, a small cohort of, you know, CUNY faculty fellows, to something that is embedded at every single college.
Right. Do you think, how does CUNY fare compared to other universities or college systems when it comes to transfer students?
Yeah, you know, this is actually an area where I'd say, in a sense, there is some good news. The good news is not particularly good for any of us in the United States, which is that this is truly a major problem at public university systems across the country. I mean, I would actually say that, you know, CUNY fares no worse than some and better than others, you know? The reality, though, is that CUNY has made this a priority, which not every system has done, just in the last couple of years, you know, building transfer into CUNY's strategic roadmap going forward. So I'm actually optimistic about how CUNY's viewing the transfer problem compared to previous, you know, years and decades. But CUNY is certainly not alone nationally in how difficult this problem has been to solve.
Wow. And do you, listening to testimony today, thinking about what you know about CUNY's systems, are there other ways to alter them to better address the problem that you identified in your report on transfer students?
Yeah, I think there's a couple, couple thoughts there. One is, I do think that that big idea of this CUNY Transfer Accelerator, which I'm proposing, would be an investment of city dollars in operationalizing what CUNY's already done. You know, it's important to note there that the initial work that really started this process with the Articulation of Credit Transfer Project, it started with grants from philanthropic foundations. You know, those foundations took kind of the risk of trying to figure out with CUNY's faculty and administrative expertise, what's the problem here and how do we solve it? And I think the good news is that that project, that program, has been really successful. We know where it's been implemented, like at Lehman College, we've seen the, the share of credits that are actually accepted by the receiving institution, Lehman in that case, from OSto's Community College, increased from about 50% to over 70%. So there's some things working there. I think the problem is that that was a grant that has expired. And while there's a little bit of additional money to kind of keep it going, I think the part that you weren't hearing, I think, from that first panel was, there's very few resources in place to even can sustain what CUNY's been doing since 2020, let alone to do the full scale of implementation across the entire system, that I think everybody up there agrees is what's needed. So that would be my concern right now, is that without the city kind of stepping up and saying, this is a priority for the city of New York, and here are the dollars to specifically allocate toward operationalizing these initiatives, that we're going to see, continue to see the benefits at the schools that have already benefited from that, that pilot program, but it'll be challenging to get that implementation to happen across the whole system.
Yeah, I, I would propose that perhaps the reason it was so successful was because you named two Bronx colleges, and things are always great in the Bronx.
Bronx is doing a lot of things right.
We do a lot of things right. You know, one- You know, one of, I think, the successful arguments financially for a program like ACE and ASAP is that, is actually the financial benefit from the program. There have been a number of studies which have shown incredible return on investment for every dollar invested in ACE and ASAP.
Absolutely true.
And for programs like a Transfer Accelerator, do similar metrics exist?
You know, great question. Well, first of all, I would say not quite at the level of, you know, the rigor behind, for instance, you know, ACE and ASAP. I mean, ASAP in particular, which has just become this leading national model, has been studied extensively. But I think a lot of the same kind of rationales are in place. So the starting point for our research, and it kind of answers a question from Councilmember Brewer, but, you know, the median CUNY graduate who earns a bachelor's degree is earning almost $69,000 a year. You know, by comparison, somebody with just an associate's degree, $53,000, you know, no college degree, $38,000. So part of what I would look at in terms of the outcomes is if the program succeeds in significantly boosting the number of transfer students who actually achieve that goal of a four-year degree, the benefits for them in terms of a lifetime of additional earnings are significant, you know, on the order of about $1.7 million across a lifetime of work. So if you try to kind of understand the cost-benefit analysis there, I think there's very similarly persuasive data. What's still emerging is really understanding the benefits of all of those specific interventions, including the T-Rex Explorer tool and embedding it earlier. And, you know, CUNY has obviously stated the intention to follow up on how that's working and be able to build the evidence base there. But in terms of the case for how important it is for New Yorkers and for New York City's economy to help more students who aspire to a bachelor's degree to actually achieve one, the data there, I think, is very strong.
Yeah, I mean, I think in this committee, we often speak about there's, you know, the moral justification for saying we should be investing for students to succeed, and then recognizing what financial investments look like and what good financial investments look like. And again, this council, for this council, CUNY is a huge priority. And that's why we are fighting very hard against so many of the cuts that this administration has proposed, because we need the advisors, we need ASAP, we need ACE, and we need our colleges to run well. You mentioned as one of the top priorities or top hurdles, faculty education and faculty support and understanding how the transfer works. Is there another recommendation from your report that you'd like to highlight as one of the things that the city or CUNY should focus on to ensure the success of transfer students?
Yeah, so I think, thank you, Chair, for the question. I mean, we mentioned a couple of things, I think, just to underscore them a little bit. You know, where there is a, already some strong infrastructure in place, like a Baruch College, it's really working. You know, having a team in place that focuses on transfer success. And it addresses multiple parts of the challenge, including getting departmental buy-in for those credits that are going to transfer, that should transfer from a community college, as well as advising and faculty knowledge and all those components. So what we're proposing there, a transfer success team at each college, I mean, that would really be replicating what's already working at a school like Baruch and bringing it everywhere. That would include the kind of transfer affinity group model that started in certain places, that would expand it, that would include, you know, the peer mentorship program that Dr. Alvaro mentioned. So that's one. I think the second is the Transfer Academy idea, in a larger sense, is about creating an infrastructure to train faculty and administrators to become knowledgeable advocates for better transfer pathways. So that's something that's, I think, very doable with only a modest kind of additional investment. Obviously, that has to be allocated specifically for that purpose. But to do that, I think CUNY already has the transfer experts in-house. The problem is that there isn't a program in place that will say, we're going to train department chairs from every single college to do this. We're going to find a kind of a group of transfer champions at each college that are going to receive hands-on training and guidance and support to become those advocates within their own department. So to do that at the scale of CUNY would require more than what CUNY is doing today. They've started that process, but it can't just be sort of a handful of fellows. Even as impressive as that initiative is, it's got to be something bigger. And for that, we're proposing the idea of a transfer academy.
And you recommend it as sort of a different, like a Transfer Accelerator program as a sort of different program? Or do you see this being more embedded as part of a program like ACE or ASAP?
Yeah, great question. I see it as being embedded. I think the Transfer Accelerator idea is really about mobilizing city resources behind a handful of key programs that are really working, to say, we know that the T-Rex tool is working. But the challenge now, as you heard in that first panel, is to make sure that every student is experiencing the power of that tool from day one. And that means, I would say, it starts with more advisors. You know, the ratios are just unacceptably high, and it's part of the reason why a program like ASAP is as effective as it is. But I would say going beyond that, what we're proposing there is really an investment in operationalizing and scaling up those key initiatives that are already working. They're just at a super-small scale. You know, they started with that pilot funding from philanthropy. CUNY has obviously indicated their desire to keep them going. But I have concerns, you know, with the budget cuts that CUNY is facing right now, a million different kind of competing priorities. I think it's going to be really difficult to keep that work going. And philanthropic support is not renewing at the level of fund of the project initially in 2020. So there is a challenge there. Now, CUNY has demonstrated its commitment to doing this. So I have confidence that they're going to, you know, they talk about the goals by December, that we're going to see those, you know, realized. But there's more that's going to be needed to make sure, even beyond the kind of, you know, agreements around articulation of credits, to make sure that all of these initiatives exist equally at every college. And that's where we think the Transfer Accelerator could be an organizing principle for getting resources where they're needed, where they're actually having an impact. And to make sure that every college is doing something right, shares those learnings with the other colleges, and are held accountable to make sure that they're embedding and institutionalizing these new tools and procedures that are working.
And has Center for Urban Future given thought to or have an opinion on the use of AI and chatbots to either help figure out how courses are aligned or to help students interact with advisement?
Yes, absolutely. So we've given some thought to this and had some conversations about this. I'm encouraged. I think there's a lot of potential here. I mean, CUNY is doing some important work in this space. I did hear on the previous panel, though, sort of expression candidly, maybe CUNY feels a little behind, you know. And I think that's important to note. I mean, there is a lot of investment that's going to be needed to be able to actually, you know, implement what maybe is an early-stage pilot program, an algorithm that a faculty member has developed to be able to actually build it out so that it's effective across CUNY. That's a huge opportunity, but it's not cheap. You know, it comes with real costs in terms of people, the time that people have to take to invest in these kinds of initiatives, the resources, you know, technological and otherwise. So I'm incredibly encouraged to hear that CUNY is making progress there. I've seen other examples at CUNY and elsewhere of AI-powered tools that are actually delivering results that are well beyond what kind of previous generations of those same tools, like nudges that you heard about before. You know, there was, you know, you may know this well, Chair, it's like the idea of the effectiveness of those nudge tools in the era of just text messaging, it had a moment, it then kind of faded. And I think the perception from a lot of researchers was, it works, but it's a marginal change. New tools, I mean, emerging tools that are AI-powered, we're talking about orders of magnitude better results. Now, that, we haven't seen that sustained at scale, you know, over time. But I'm optimistic, and that's a major opportunity. But what I heard loud and clearly is that CUNY is going to need additional investment and focused attention to make sure that those innovations are implemented.
I want to thank you so much for your report, for your time and for your expertise.
Thank you, Chair.
On this really critical matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm now be calling our next panel, Ibrahim Xavier Johnson. Onyekachi Okiki. You can see it. Onyekachi Okiki. Jen. Gabori. Gabori. You must be a doctor. Writing a prescription. And Sharon Brown. Before testimony, please state your name for the record. We'll go from right to left.
Good morning. Sorry, good afternoon. My name is Onyekachi Okiki. And I'm representing Young Invincibles, and I'm a senior at Hunter College. Thank you.
You could begin your testimony.
Oh, no, oh, okay. Forgive me, it's my first time. Okay. Okay, so, so good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for your time to listen to my testimony today. So I'm a senior attending Hunter College, studying human biology and sociology. I'm also a proud alumna of Borough of Manhattan Community College. And as someone who has attended both a two-year and a four-year school, the transferring process between both schools was a difficult and arduous one. After I left BMCC and I entered Hunter, I found that I was significantly struggling in almost every area of my life, academically, financially, mentally, and personally. The first semester at Hunter was actually one of my toughest semesters to date. I don't believe that I had adequate support regarding advising. I had no one to explain to me how degree works functioned. And consequently, I picked random classes to fulfill the full-time requirements that could qualify for student loans, a decision I still regret to this day. I picked classes that I should not have been enrolled in due to the pressure of having to enroll in classes right before the beginning of the semester started. I am sure that if I had more support via an orientation or crucial advising, I would have not made those costly mistakes that negatively impacted my, me academically that semester. My academic standing was important because, at the time, I participated in the Community Scholars Program. And that's a specialized program for high-achieving transfer students. Through this program, I received help with choosing my major and having a mentor, which I believe helped me significantly. However, due to my low academic performance during my first semester, I was removed from the program. And I wish that I could have had a second chance to redeem myself and remain in the program. Had I received more professional support from the program, I believe I would have been able to stay and do much better afterwards. Additionally, at Hunter, I was mandated to take a sociology 101 course to begin my sociology minor. While I already had taken the class previously, I discovered on degree works that my sociology 101 credit had not been fulfilled. I contacted the Vice President of Academic Affairs about this issue, and thankfully, she was able to obtain my previous transcript and manually update my degree works that my sociology 101 requirement would be able to be fulfilled. Unfortunately, I cannot say that others in my shoes had the same outcome while encountering this problem. Another issue I encountered was a difference in resources while transferring from BMCC to Hunter. At BMCC, I struggled daily, and often I endured the day with nothing to eat, no money to purchase anything. And on top of this, I was unable to secure a job, both on campus and off campus. So I was blessed with the opportunity to learn about Single Stop, which is now known as the advocacy and resource center through a friend. It had everything I needed and more. And so through the substantial support of Single Stop, I was, I obtained...
You can just finish up your thought, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I obtained MetroCards and food vouchers to purchase lunch to the cafeteria. Unfortunately, when I transferred to Hunter, I found that Hunter did not have this resource center. And having Single Stop at Hunter would have really helped me with the various issues I mentioned before. And so my story is just one of many, like thousands of other students, of course. And so I'm just asking my city leaders today to hear my story and to fully invest in additional support across all CUNY campuses. And thank you for listening to my testimony.
Thank you. I think you really kind of laid out, articulated very well, the problems that exist for so many students, which is there are resources that may exist, but you have to figure out how to find them. And so you had to go all the way to the, you said, Vice President of Academic Affairs, and really, really fight just to get what you should have had in the first place. And you happened to find out about the Single Stop program because a friend happened to tell you, which is a story we hear all too frequently here at this committee. In fact, the first hearing I held was about the Single Stop successor programs, the very programs that helped you. And one of the issues we heard then, and we're hearing it now, is students knowing how and when to access it. The hearing I referenced before about students with disabilities, same story as yours, students happened to tell their friends about the Office for Students with Disabilities. And so you are, thank you for articulating a problem that continues to trouble our CUNY system, which is with all the resources they may be able to provide, accessing them remains a challenge for so many of our students. Thank you.
Thanks.
Xavier?
Yes, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Yes, my name is Ibrahim Xavier Johnson. I'm a graduate of Lehman College in the Bronx. I transferred to Lehman. Fresh from the Army, I was on active-duty Army. Prior to enrolling in CUNY, I had an AA degree. I dropped out of several colleges. I had difficulties in life. But after joining the Army, I was determined to finish. The advisors at Lehman College looked at my 143 credits with no bachelor's degree, and they were committed to me finishing a bachelor's degree at CUNY. They said, and they told me in the beginning, you will finish with us. It was rigorous, it was difficult. But the same discipline that I had in the Army, I experienced the same rigorous academic training at Lehman College. The professors were committed to my success. I went to Lehman during 9/11. That was a critical period. A lot of people were dropping out because of what happened during 9/11. The professors at CUNY met with all of us and told us, the show must go on, you will finish terrorist attack or not. We're going to finish. And we finished. I graduated with 3.7 GPA honors in the history department, went on to make a whole bunch of money. And I'm a CUNY success story. And I want to say this about advisement. The advisors at CUNY were not just the academic advisors. They were the department chairs, they were the professors. They didn't just advise us about academics. They advised us through our life problems. I talked to my professors about marital issues. Anything that would stop us from academics, they were there to support us. And it became like an extension of my own family. After graduating from CUNY, I go back to Lehman College. I bring my children there, I meet some of my old professors. And I think success for transfer students And I think success for transfer students depends on the commitment from the staff. And that commitment is what I experienced at Lehman College. If you can reproduce Lehman College and make it CUNY-wide, I think that's the model.
Thank you for sharing your story. Really, really uplifting to hear the success stories, especially from Lehman College, which is in my council district in the Bronx. And of course, thank you for your service, your service to our country. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jen Kabori. This is my first time testifying in front of the council in my new role, which is First Vice President for the PSC CUNY. Until eight days ago, I was the Hunter College Chapter Chair and I served, I have served since 2009 until eight days ago as a department advisor in my own department. And I also have served as the Senate Chair for our college senate, seeing appeals from transfer students for courses. So, students can appeal right when a course isn't accepted. That's part of why I came to talk to you here today from the PSC CUNY, because of my long experience doing this. I have used AEB Navigate. Hunter is an early adopter of that program. I've used it for more than two and a half years. I was trying to figure it out from my email just now. And it is a helpful tool. I'm certainly glad to have Navigate. I would certainly welcome more tools from maps and AI bots. But I'm here from the union to tell you that this is a human power problem. This is a labor problem. We don't have enough faculty and we don't have enough staff. And that is the beginning and the end of the problem. We need people to give people information, to use those tools and to teach them how they work. I like Navigate because I can text students and say, "Why aren't you in my office?" But then they have to have a, they have to have an office to come to. I am a little bit disappointed that when you and Councilmember Brewer pushed University Provost Hensel on the question of, "Do you have adequate faculty?", she said, "Well, we're doing pretty well with the 600 lines." 333 faculty lines were lost between 2018 and 2022. Those aren't the number of people, faculty, that left. That's the number of lines that CUNY didn't keep as lines, that they put back into the pot because so much money has drained out in the Cuomo years. Right? And so, that, it is not, in fact, that we are up 600 lines. We're up about 200 lines from that money that Governor Hochul gave us. We do not have adequate numbers of faculty. I really appreciate Mr. Dorkin's testimony and the question about like training faculty. As a department advisor, I remained the department advisor from 2009 until 2024 because I am one of only four faculty, full-time faculty members in my department, who are one shy of the required number we are supposed to have by CUNY bylaws. And I am the only faculty member willing to be a department advisor because it is so much work. And during COVID, Hunter College took the opportunity to cut the workload credit that department advisors receive at a time when our workload was exploding in order to advise students. Community college faculty generally do not receive any workload credit for being advisors in their department. Hunter, this is the last thing I'll say to you. When we just filled recent vacancies for full-time, for the full-time staff advisors at Hunter College, we got down to a ratio of 912 students to one academic advisor. After we filled four vacancies.
Thank you. I have one question about training. We keep here, we kept hearing from Mrs. Dorkin, we heard from CUNY about training faculty to understand and engage in the transfer process. Is there a requirement in your agreement with CUNY? Is there a requirement for training of this sort?
No.
And does PSC have a position on requiring certain trainings?
The PSC would like to see workload credit given to faculty who do labor that is above and beyond what the courses, the heavy course load that we have. Among the different reasons that faculty and staff leave CUNY is because of our incredibly high workload, especially compared to our public, not our private peers, our public peers. So, like when I tell you that like community college faculty are not given any workload credit to be a department advisor, so they're, they're teaching a heavy load, like more than their peers, and then they are just asked to be advisors. And they don't necessarily, they may receive training, but they don't necessarily receive training. And it is entirely a kind of ad hoc process. And I'm really glad to hear that like, like they're really, I mean, I think I'm a good advisor. I'm really glad to hear there are advisors at Lehman College.
Which is very clearly, by the way, not in the job description to, you know, it's one of the incredible things about educators, right? It's not in the job description to care so deeply and to push so hard. And yet, they do. And I think you're such a success story about how deeply our faculty and advisors care for their, which is otherwise work, but it's the people they care for, which is just incredible.
I keep Kleenex in my office and I keep Kleenex in my office that I don't get like Reambers for. But that's a, you know, you know.
You should try generic, instead of Kleenex, maybe try Costco brand.
We all buy supplies, right, out of our pockets. And I keep Kleenex in my office because I am a department advisor and because almost every student who comes into my office, for lots of different kinds of reasons, including just as simple as like, I can't get an over-tally to a course I need because the course is so full, because we don't have enough faculty, that, that, in fact...
You don't have to whisper it, by the way. We're full agreement.
No. Yeah, I'd like the provost to hear me too. So, that we don't have enough faculty and we don't have enough advisors. And that students' inability to get that class, but more, that students' inability to map exactly what they need, like the testimony that we have heard, is exactly the problem. And I can tell you as someone who's sat granting appeals, right, that I have to say, "Oh, well, close enough." Right when they're on the cusp of graduation, as a kind of act of mercy. And time and time again, when I ask students, like, "Well, why did you take this class instead of that class when you're appealing it?", they say, "Well, I couldn't, I signed up to get an appointment with advisor, but it was after, it was three weeks after the term started. And I had no ability to add or drop the class and know which class exactly fit the final three requirements that I needed. And the map didn't necessarily tell me." And, which is a problem. And by the way, peer-to-peer programs are great for some things and they're not great for other things. But meanwhile, at my college, we didn't hire about 400 work-study students this year. And I actually think they should maybe sue CUNY, by the way, because we don't have enough financial aid staff to process their applications to become work-study students and like use their financial aid.
I just want to go back to the training, certain requirements. Are there any requirements for faculty to be trained or to receive any sort of, you know, whether it's transfer, whether it's, you know, sexual harassment training? Is there any requirement? And in the same vein, is there any requirement for things like professional development hours that either adjunct or tenured professor or full-time professors have to engage in?
So, we, there are about four trainings that we do, for example, in modules online, for example, on Title IX harassment issues or on, you know, don't open junk email that ransoms the entire college's data system, right? Something that has happened to hackers in Chechnya. We've had, you know, we have four required, that's happened, right? And then you had to remind college presidents, "Please don't pay ransoms to people that ransom your data." So, we have four required trainings that we are required to do and we get persistent emails reminding us as we near the deadlines. For people who are advisors and sign up to be advisors, you get a turkey sandwich when you show up at the training. But I'm not sure that necessarily anything happens to you if you don't go to the training that may or may not be offered by your dean's office. And sometimes I know my dean's office has not necessarily offered any training. And so, whole cycles of advisors don't necessarily, like faculty advisors, like don't necessarily get any of that training.
So, it's, I guess, I'm asking, there's no agreement between PSC and CUNY that there are, you're saying there are some trainings, Title IX, you mentioned, you mentioned don't, fishing emails.
Yeah, right.
Do you know, do you happen to know the other two?
Right, workplace violence.
It's not a quiz, don't worry.
No, I can email it to you through the, submit the...
Well, there's one more, see? Okay, and then anything else it could be, it can be required by...
No, most faculty, in fact, most faculty go out of their way not to have this information because it is such a burden when you signal that you are... For a lot of faculty, they do not signal that they want to advise students. I say this, this is horrible to say, I realize, because they don't want to signal to students that I have knowledge that I can give to you on how to use X-class for Y-class. We're supposed to just, outside of our department context, we're supposed to just send people to academic advising. But also, there's some, there are handfuls of people who have spent a lot of time basically acquiring the kind of knowledge that some faculty have and that some of the professional advisors have. But like, they're, that, those are handfuls of us that have done that. And it's not systematic. And what you would need is workload credit and an agreement to have that workload credit, have that training.
And then my last question, is there any requirement or request that faculty upload or post online their syllabi, curriculum?
Absolutely, faculty, departments and programs absolutely require faculty to post. That is part of assessment and part of our accreditation.
Okay, I want to thank you for your testimony. And lastly, we have Ms. Sharon Brown.
Hello, I'm Sharon Brown. Hello, Committee Council and Eric Dinowitz, Higher Education. Congratulations on Israel getting back the hostages, the four hostages. Okay, this is transfer students and how to help them. So, the CUNY Higher Education, SUNY and all of that, oh, CUNY. I went to Marymount Manhattan College on a leadership scholarship and I've been to different colleges, Medgar Evers. I went to Business Technical School, Technology School, and I did a lot of different things. One thing that I've found to be an issue going to different schools, Medgar Evers, Marymount, the two technology schools and business schools, is that the way they transfer credits doesn't work out properly. So, they don't have a credit-for-credit transfer. So, if you get 100 credits in one school and then you go to the next school and try to get in there, you can't take all of your credits with you. So, when you're trying to get a degree, you won't be able to carry over all your credits. It's like you have to start again from scratch. So, I think they need to do something to allow all of your credits that you accumulated from every school to work towards your degree. Or that's going to be a problem for people wanting to be transfer students. And they might leave and not go to another school, just leave the CUNY system altogether because of the fact that they want to have their credits count. Because once you go to another school and you transfer there, they don't take all the credits. So, what do you do with those credits? They're just hanging in the balance. I guess you can go back to school and try to fulfill something else. But how can we find a way to make those credits all count? So, they might take 50 credits, then you have 100 credits. And when you try to get a degree at another school, you have to do 50 more credits and you have just 50 credits from, let's say, Marymount. I'll have 50 credits there that don't count for anything and have to take the same classes over and over again at the new school. So, that's something that transfer students are going to face. I was in a leadership scholarship program for political science major and law. What I've found is they don't really tell you how to go about funding everything in your scholarship situation. You can do a full ride scholarship, you can do partial scholarship. I think they should make it more known about the funding, that there's other grants and things out there. You can have more than one scholarship at the same time.
Thank you. You can just finish up your last thought, please. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I also think that for transfer students or any student, we need to bring prayer back in school, bibles, Judaism and Christianity. And antisemitism needs to get out. And a lot of students that are coming from liberal arts schools who dealt with the situations that's happening with Palestine and Israel in the schools, they may be leaving schools and they're going to have to be transfer students and deal with the situation. They need an atmosphere that's conducive to this country. We are Judeo-Christian and we need Judaism and Christianity in our schools.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I'd like to thank this panel for their testimony today. That concludes our in-person portion of our public testimony. We will now move to remote testimony. If you are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and you may begin once the sergeant-at-arms sets the clock and queues you. Jared Martino, you may begin once you are unmuted and the sergeant queues you.
You may begin.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us. My name is Jared Martino and I'm a graduate student in the Higher Education Administration at SUNY Stony Brook University and the Coordinator of Activities and Engagement at Vaughn College of Aeronautics and Technology. I want to thank everyone from the New York City Council, especially the Committee on Higher Education, for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing. I am here to share my thoughts and experiences on the CUNY transfer process on behalf of myself and as a New York Youth Advisory Board Member at the Young Invincibles. I began my collegiate journey in 2016 as a SUNY student and by the end of the fall semester in 2018, I had begun my transfer process into the CUNY system. From the beginning of my collegiate career in the SUNY system, I felt comforted and capable due to the wealth of resources available and clear understanding of what my degree progression would look like. While I recognize that the transfer process itself comes with many challenges, there are considerable opportunities for CUNY to improve this process and increase transfer student retention and persistence. Upon my experience at CUNY, I struggled with a lack of outreach to transfer students and a number of fellow transfer students I met confirmed that they shared this experience. Anecdotally, the most successful transfer students I noticed in my time were CUNY associate to CUNY bachelor transfer students who had already networked with CUNY, current CUNY students and were able to learn more about the upcoming challenges they were to face from peers. My own transfer acclimation process was based on applying the new student experience I had recently had at SUNY and challenging the limits of a Google search. Then I faced the largest challenge, the academic credit approval process. The time it took to have my credits evaluated by CUNY City College was significant and it took weeks before I had concrete knowledge of what I had received credit for. Ultimately, a majority of my courses I had taken from SUNY were only accepted as elective credits despite being for the same major and nonsensically covered a range, diverse range of course levels. Much of my time was spent retaking intra-level courses that were identical to content in intra-level courses that I took at SUNY, leaving me without the opportunity to apply my knowledge and expand my studies in higher-level courses and electives. Since graduating from CUNY, I spent a year supporting first-generation college students towards their degree aspirations. I supported many students who elected to transfer into the CUNY system, all facing considerable challenges in a lack of communication, a lack of understanding of the entry process and a lack of collegiate cultural capital. First-generation college students in particular are at a risk of this pitfall as the considerable amount of red tape and formal policy required to maintain matriculation at universities can be dizzying. The CUNY transfer process has struggled to bridge the gap between where aspiring college students are and where they need to be to succeed. We often consider the transfer process as a leftover, treating these students as an afterthought whose educational aspirations motivate them to succeed regardless of any challenge. Yet, many transfer students struggle with the same challenges new college students face, yet are given minimal support and resources to overcome said barriers.
Your time has expired.
I recommend that the New York City Council and the Committee on Higher Education expand transfer resources on campus and fund to better serve students and enter the CUNY transfer system. I also recommend that CUNY systems model transfer resources more heavily through programs like the HCAP Transfer Pipeline Program at Hunter College, which supports Asian-American first semester transfer students with direct peer mentorship and community development events to ease the collegiate transfer process.
Thank you.
These direct peer mentor programs and the community development events are integral in developing lasting impacts on student retention.
Thank you so much for your testimony. John Verzani has signed up to testify and is not on the Zoom. John Verzani, if you are online or in person, please raise your hand. Thank you. If there is anyone present in the room or on Zoom that hasn't had the opportunity to testify, please raise your hand. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by the committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. We have concluded public testimony for this hearing. I would like to thank CUNY, Center for an Urban Future, everyone who testified for sharing your experiences with transferring and transfer credits. Very clearly, a, an area where there's a lot of growth needed and a lot of work to be done, but also a lot of steps being taken to ensure our transfer students are getting the support they need and the support they deserve. This hearing is adjourned. Thank you.